All right, we'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for June 18th, 2024 to order. Would staffs please take the roll?
Here.
Here.
Here. Let's set up this mic so that we can share. All right, we will open the meeting for Shakopee Public Utilities. Mr. Drant, please call the roll.
President Krieg.
Here.
Vice President Luternow.
Here.
Commissioner Mokel.
Here.
Commissioner Delaney.
Here.
Commissioner Fox. All five present.
All right, before we do a pledge of allegiance, let's just go around and introduce ourselves. Matt Lehman, Shakopee Mayor.
Greg Drant, General Manager, Shakopee Utilities.
Jim Delaney, Commissioner of Spock, also City Council. Check.
BJ Luternow, Vice President of Spock.
Angelica Contreras, City Council.
Jesse Lara, Shakopee City Council.
Kayden Fox, Spock Commissioner.
Jay Whiting, Shakopee City Council.
Kathy Mokel, Spock Commissioner.
Bill Reynolds, City Administrator for Shakopee.
Justin Krieg, President, Shakopee Public Utilities. Thank you, sir. Item number two, if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance stipulated by the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to our agenda from our councilor staff?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're going to remove item nine, which is a closed session with Shakopee Public Utilities. After discussion with Mr. Drant, we realized that that was not necessary at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any changes from council? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent business. Any changes to the consent business?
Nothing from staff, sir.
And Mr. Whiting?
I'd like to pull 4A11. And then if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as modified.
Sir, second? Any other changes to the consent agenda? Second by Mr. Delaney. Mr. Reynolds, you want to read the consent?
Yes, sir. These are the June 18th of 2024. 4A1 are the city council amendments. 4A2 is a designation of an official newspaper. 4A3 is a city website redesign and a four-year web services agreement. 4A4 is a sewer, excuse me, server and storage replacement project. 4A5 is the monthly financial review for May of 2024. 4A6 approves a gambling permits permit for Shakopee hockey. 4A7 is appointment of election judges. 4A8 is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's toward zero deaths enforcement program grant application. 4A9 is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's armor grant, equipment grant. 4A10 is the Minnesota Council on Local Results and Innovations Performance Measurements Program Report. 4A12 adopts a resolution governing write and vote counting. 4A13 is consenting to a collateral agreement of contract for private redevelopment in Shakopee flats. 4B1 approves a wetland replacement plan for DNR Minnesota Valley State Trail Project. 4B2 approves a contract for lift station 16 forced main air release valve replacement. 4B3 approves a cooperative agreement with Scott County for county highway 18 trail extension improvements. 4B4 approves a right-of-entry and reimbursement agreement with Canterbury Park Entertainment LLC. 4B5 approves a contract for lift station 16, the levy rehabilitation. 4C1 is a finding of facts and conclusion for Shakopee gravel redevelopment project. 4C2 change orders, are change orders for professional services for sand venture construction. 4C3 is a planned unit development amendment to the Canterbury Southwest PUD. And 4C, excuse me, 4C4 is award of contract for downtown mural on Lewis Street Building. And 4D1 authorizes the hire of Chad Smith for a police officer.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, recognition of citizens to the city council on an item not on the agenda. So if you're here for an item that's not on our agenda tonight, now would be the time to come forward and speak. Anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council? Last call, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number six, business removed from the consent agenda to be discussed at this time. 4A11 was removed by Councilmember Whiting. Mr. Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution to accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Minnesota Safe Ride Program. And this is to help increase awareness for our safe rides program that happens at certain holidays around Shakopee, where free rides are given for people to get home safely. So in an effort to increase awareness, I thought I'd take it off consent and make a motion to adopt a resolution, R2024-TAC098, accepting the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Minnesota Safe Rides Program Grant and Award, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the necessary contracts and agreements applicable to accepting this award. What are some of the holidays? Do we remember what some of those are? New Year's Eve, I think we do it.
Yep, New Year's, yep.
New Year's, Thanksgiving Eve is also a big one.
Big one in Shakopee.
Yep.
Well, that's great because that's just another opportunity for Shakopee to give back a little.
Well, we always see the DWI numbers too, and the goal is to offer them a ride so they're not driving and endangering others. Can't hurt to try.
So that's my motion.
Sir, second? Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Contreras. Okay, discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Item number seven is a public hearing. Vacation of a segment of Fourth Avenue West, public right-of-way. A motion to open the public hearing would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lara, second by Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Kersky?
Mayor and council, again, this is a public hearing for vacation of a segment of Fourth Avenue West, public right-of-way. Levi Schneider, applicant and representative of Bridgestone Ventures LLP, which is a property owner of Adjacent Parcels, which is Danny's Construction, has requested vacation of the segment of Fourth Avenue Public Right-of-Way located east of Adams Street. The balance of that right-of-way, the south half, and a portion of the north half have previously been vacated, so there's no intent to the city to construct a road in this location. The city has no issue with the vacation. Condition, the applicant shall dedicate easements to ensure protection of utilities located within the right-of-way and allow for construction of a future trail. So this is the property we're talking about. We're proposing tonight to vacate the two areas that are currently in blue. So this is the actual map. And some of you know the area, Danny's Construction's basically in this area. So we recommend adopting the resolution approving the vacation of the segment of Fourth Avenue West Public Right-of-Way located east of Adams Street.
Questions of staff. Mr. Whiting?
Mr. Kersky, if I'm remembering that right, that's a big hill, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to follow up?
Oh, that's where I'm thinking it is.
I'm trying to better understand what the rationale is for the request to vacate the right-of-way, the easement. What's the rationale for the request? Do you know?
So, Mayor and council, I believe the applicant, if you've seen this yard, which you can, I think, in this area, it's pretty dense with materials, and they're going to leave these trees up, but I think they want to cut these trees down and store more additional construction materials there. This has already been vacated. This has actually belonged to the state prison.
Yeah, yeah, reformatory.
So these are the last two pieces, so they'll go over to this property.
Any other questions of staff? And the utilities are covered if there's any in the area that they'll have to grant easements, so that's covered. All right, any other questions from staff? This is a public hearing. If there's anybody here that'd like to speak to this matter, now would be the time to do so. Anybody here that would like to speak to this matter? It is a public hearing. Okay, I'm seeing none. What's the wishes of council, Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sir, a second to the motion. Mr. Delaney? Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution R2024-TAC088, a resolution approving the vacation of a segment of Fourth Avenue West, public right-of-way located east of Adams Street.
And to the motion, Mr. Contreras? Discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eight, joint meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. Welcome to City Council for a joint meeting. We appreciate all you guys doing, glad you're here. Do you have a presentation?
I do.
All right.
And it was in your packet, I believe, as well. And so thank you for the time, council and commissioners. We just wanted to kind of give you a year in review. We got lots of big things coming up, so I think that we just started off with kind of an agenda that we have here, so we wanted to talk a little bit about our community engagement. Obviously, we want to talk about 2023, year in review. We like doing this after we get the audit and presentation done and get past those type of things. We got some awards that we're working on. Obviously, a big project we're working on is AMI. Some of our new federal regulations that we've just got and the government has passed on us, so some of the challenges that we're facing and some of the things that we need to partnership on that with water treatment, some of the gravel pit development could happen and what that looks like, backflow prevention, EV chargers. I've gotten some questions on that lately. And then finally, some finals on financials and kind of where we stick. So I do have questions on quite a few of these slides, so I think what I'll do is I'll go through some of the things and ask if there's any questions before moving on to the next topic, so we don't ramble through a whole bunch of stuff and then not have that opportunity to ask questions when we're working there. So on our community engagement side of things, obviously, we heavily involved in our community, and we have a partnership with the city on lots of these things. We did get a Chamber of Community Award winner this last year. We partner on the flower baskets, and I think the city takes care of hanging them, ordering them, watering them, and we help in some of the purchase. Rhythm on the Rails was a fabulous event, open to the public, and we were able to kind of get some message out to some of our customers. So we had some beach balls, sign up for paperless, you know, go green, some of those things that maybe people don't think about. Some of the only exposures they get is some of these events. You know, as we were talking about, even as soon as today, you know, we spend $7,000 to $8,000 a month in postage, sending out bills. So when people go paperless, that affects our utility and helps our bottom line, helps our ratepayers out. So we're trying to encourage that, but sometimes there's not a lot of ways for us to get some of those messages out. So being involved in the community is important. Faribault Energy Park, we send all the fourth graders over there for kind of an energy tour. Our power agency does that. We do blood drives, vehicle fairs, you know, all those things, Toys for Tots, which we're super, super involved in the community, and we want to continue to do that. Some of the things on year in review, obviously, on our electric system, we have an AMI. I'll talk a little bit more about RP3. We did purchase East Shakopee Substation Site way on the east side of our town. That'll be our next substation. We think that we'll add additional transformers, but it might be the one, our last one, that we actually have to build from new for acquiring land. So I think we're in a pretty good shape on, once we got this.
Where is that?
So this would be Morris Hansen on that, right underneath the transmission line. So there's going to be no transmission builds besides just crossing the roads. We've already did the study with Excel Energy and got approval that the line has capacity on it. So we did that part of our due diligence before we bought that property, so.
Mr. Whiting, it's the last plat that we saw in that area where we joined them two lots. It's right next door.
Just making sure I didn't miss one.
Yeah, so, yep, so we're working on that and working on, we're going to try to get the site ready this year. There is storing some material on there, and part of the purchase is they could store materials on there for a couple of years, so we're working through some of those things that we're working on right now, but we think that that's important. And then on our west side, obviously, with everything that's going on on our west side, we did get that final, that transformer energized, so everything is ready to go there on that side of things. We did build it, that substation, so we could add a second transformer there, and we wouldn't have to do any more permitting. We could just set a transformer in there. So if we get a real heavy user on the west end of town out there, we're poised for growth in that area, and we can work on that. So we're excited about that.
Hypothetically.
Yeah, right? Obviously, on a water system, and we'll talk about some of the AMI project and what that looks like. We've really been busy on water treatment. What does that look like with new of the regulations? We will also eventually, in this presentation, we'll talk about backflow because that was really important topic point and where we're at and where we're going there. Opt outside policy, so for our water meters, so we've had some internal discussions with our commission, and you know, the mesh system that we built out with AMI, the meters kind of talk to each other to get back to a reading point. So it works really well when everybody is working together, getting all these meters done, talks to the electric meter, because the water meter just is, it's a battery in there, so about 10 to 12 year battery life, and we probably have to change out a battery in there. But it, so it sends a low frequency signal, less than a baby monitor, less than a cellphone, and it sends a signal to the electric, and then the electric actually sends a signal back into our system for reading. So we can do it that way. But our commission's decided that if somebody's concerned about some of those RF frequencies that they're, they can get a, have a plumber put a wire to go outside, and they can put that frequency outside their house. So we do offer that option on there. They just have to do a little extra work to get that wire outside, and then we'll put the device outside. We don't think there's much risk there. We've done lots of research on it, but we wanted to, you know, if somebody is really, you know, really set on making sure that, we wanted to give an option, so.
I have a question on that because my meter was replaced recently, and I don't think it's the newest one. Might be, I don't know. But it's got a wire that goes outside to this little black thing that's on the outside of the house, about that big round.
Yep. Yeah, so some of those, depending on what year, depending on there, some of them had two wires and some of them had three wires. So it all depends per house, what, if, whether they could use that wire. We are using some of those wires. If they have the right number of wires, we can just go put that device outside, and then we don't have to, and we can reprogram the meter. So we're working on doing some of those right now. So if we can do that, we will. And then the other one is if you don't have that and want that, you're able to, you know, if you run that wire, we're able to opt outside. So we think it works better. We think the batteries last longer in the house, obviously, controlled environment, just like everything, it works a little better. So we're encouraging people to put them inside, but if there is something that they really want, rather than us continually trying to read meters manually or go up to houses or still having some of those devices that now it has to go further to get there, we wanted to have a policy on that, so. And we also worked on some businesses on unsuared water rates. So if a business has a process in there, rather than paying some of the fees, they could have a little bit higher rate and if they're not putting it down the sewer system. So we worked on that this last year. And then Pump House 23, which is up by tank number eight, the newest tank up on top of the hill out in Windermere, we're working on the pump house. So we do have a well drilled out there, well number 23, and then this is the pump house that will take the water out of the aquifer, chlorine fluoride, and then put it into the tower. So we have a booster station kind of closer to the high school that currently pushes the water up there and fills the water tower, 750,000 gallons, and, but we're all putting a well there, and then that site can hold up to three, maybe four, but just got to get proper spacing not to affect the aquifer for drawdown rates and stuff like that. So we for sure can get three in that area.
What was the quality of that water?
So, so far, all of our newer ones have been really good. Some of our older ones, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, is we have a couple wells that are, you know, close to some limits or at least maybe half. We get concerned when they get close to half the limits, right? Like, okay, we need to get a game plan, and water treatment is the game plan, right? But so far, we've had good results in that area. We have two wells by the, by the high school right there, really good water in that area, thoroughly in that aquifer, newer part. It's a little bit, a little bit more ground cover, so there's a little bit more filtration before the water gets down to the aquifer and some of those things. So we've had really good luck in that area so far and good production in that area as well. We also did some cybersecurity planning and IT risk assessment, so we're working on those things, making sure that, obviously, with some of the, all the cyber attacks that you hear and read about, so we make sure, like, what does our SCADA systems look like when we operate our electric, our water systems? And so we've been, you know, just doing a self-assessment on that. We have consultants that come in and help us make sure that we're doing, doing things right on that side of things. We had a clean audit this year, so that's been, that was another great year for us, is just to make sure that we had a bunch of new reporting requirements, so it was good to get that clean audit. We were, the Scott County approached us with the city as well on, what does an 800 megahertz radio system look like on, out on 83? Tank number three across from Canterbury, there's some spotty coverages I heard in that area and stuff like that, so we wanted to be a good partner. We brought it back to our commission and talked about, you know, can they use that? Radio frequencies up on that water tower, and at our next meeting, we'll get that agreement finalized. The Scott County has agreed it, so we've kind of reviewed it. So we're in the final, final lap of that one, and we'll get that one done. So we're excited about that, to partnership on that, making sure that, this also helps the utility. We're going to go to an 800 megahertz radio system, so when we talk, if there's, if there is an event that happens in the community, now we can radio through the radio systems on the 800 megahertz PD or FIRE or something. Where currently now, we have to dial 911, and what if those systems are down or clogged up? So we're excited to work through that process, and we're coming to the end of that as well. And then just in our policy manual, we looked at some right-to-access, SPU-owned equipment. Sometimes people think, you know, that it's on my property, but if we need to meter something or if we have a broken meter, we need to change, we need to change that meter. So we put it in our policy manuals that when they sign up for service, they agree to terms and conditions that, hey, if something's broke, we got to be able to fix it. So sometimes we get customers that don't really like that side of things, so we worked on some new policies on that as well, so. So we'll talk a kind of year in review on those type of things. I know that we have some of the other ones that we're talking about, water treatment, backflow, it's going to be some other topics, so we can wait to ask those, and PFAS and AMI also, but just kind of a year in review. Is there any questions on those types, on those things? All right, we'll go to American Public Power, which is about 2,000 community-owned electric utilities in the United States. We fill out an application process on system improvements, reliability, workforce development, and safety, and all of our outages go into this as well, and what's our reliability system look like? American Public Power, which we're a member of, has an application process. And if you, if you do lots of system improvements, which we have to do to keep up with development, our workforce, it's important that we train them, make sure we train people for future and where we're going, safety and reliability. And if you're, if you're a Diamond Designee, you get over 98 points, 98 to 100. Every three years, you go through this process, and it does take a lot of staff time to do it. But we were super excited that, you know, that we got the Diamond Designee for the third time, so this will be the ninth year in a row that we're able to get this. About 8% of, hold the RP3 designation, so it is a, it's kind of an elite group that is able to do that. This year, we were the only Diamond Designee. There were other ones that got it lower, but we were the only one in Minnesota that got Diamond Designee. So we're super excited about that, and I take that back, this is the fourth year, the fourth time, so this will be the 12th year. So it's been, it was exciting for us to get it. We like to do self-evaluations and making sure that we're continuing to evolve as an, as a utility, and about only nine utilities in Minnesota hold that Diamond Designee. So when we talk to businesses, and Mr. Kersky and I talk to different businesses, we talk about some of these things, reliability, workforce development, some of those things, and we're able to show real, real standards that are met in what we do as a utility, and that really helps us to attract businesses as well. Talk a little bit about the meter changeout, why, and where we're going with that. So we're excited to do this. This was a decision that was made several years ago. We had an old billing system that was not very good for, for us as a utility, as well as being able to give reports to the city when they ask for it, and internal reports was very challenging. So quite a few years ago, we took a step back, and we said, listen, we need to do a new billing system to make sure that when we get all this data in, that we can house it properly. So we took a step back, we did that, we got that up and running, we're super excited about that. And then now, we got into the meter side of things in the AMI. So, you know, if you're doing it just to get the reads, we're probably doing it for the wrong reasons, then maybe we should just keep meter readers, right? Like, we're doing it for some of the enhanced technologies that we've talked about, usage insight, especially people that are techie, want this information, they want to be able to go online, see what their usage was yesterday, what does my bill look like, am I using it at what time, is there a way I can modify mine? As well as us, a utility, need to be better and inform our customers when they're, you know, have a leaky toilet or something that uses water all night long. We should be sending text messages to our customers and say, hey, you might want to look at either a water softener or a toilet that's leaking, really just to be a better steward of all, for everyone. So we're looking at that, faster response time for outages as well. So when we get up and running on this, we'll get text messages that we can now link to our people that are on call to say, hey, we have somebody out of power. They might be coming in before we even get a call. So we think that's important as well. And then, you know, we can also, as we get a little further down the line, can we shorten some of our billing in the rears right now? Sometimes if it gets red at the early parts of the month, it goes the whole month before it gets sent, the bill gets sent out, and then it's due the next month. So sometimes people don't understand that they're 45 days behind on wherein their usage is. So we get a high usage, something that's 45 days ago, it's hard to explain to customers. So hopefully, over time, we can shorten some of those. It's still going to be a 30-day billing cycle, but it'll be like, okay, we're going to read your meter, and then we're going to send out your bill, and then we're able to do that. Because we can read the meters in short, short time, so we can read everything in way less than an hour. We just tell it when to read it, and it'll pull in 19,000 electric and 14,000 water reads, and then, and it'll kind of tell us where we got alarms and what we should do and some of those things. So we're excited about that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Both on water and the power smart meters, what do you do with the hacking concerns? I mean, you pointed out safety concerns in a changing world, and, yeah, okay, so it's individuals on personal property, dogs, pets, but really, today's world, it's the cyber threat, the hacking, and then I got power outage, okay? So what happens if there's a power outage? How does this thing reset? Or where does this information get stored?
Right, so, so most of it is cloud-based stuff where we get that. We do have servers in-house to store the information. When, when a meter is back on, it'll show that it's got power, and when it's off, it'll show a different color for us in the office. We'll have maps that will show different areas of town. We're not going to put it so gradient that people could say, this house is out of power. We don't think that that's right. We think that maybe if an area is out of power, we're able to show a map of an area that's out of power, but when we log into our system, we'll be able to do that.
I guess maybe, I'll break this down a little tighter. So your meter says you used 100 bucks worth of electricity, power was out. How is this holding that data when there's no electricity going to it?
Battery or? So the, so the water meters have batteries in them, so they'll send it out. The electric meter, it just goes to sleep, and then it'll come back up, and it has all that. So we have 15-minute increments, so it stamps itself every 15 minutes on how much power was used the last 15 minutes. So it's hard stamped into that, and then it overrides itself after like 90 days. So it'll stamp it in there, and then when the power comes back on, it'll be, oh, the last time I got you was this minute. Here's what your reading was, now here's all the future stuff, and so then it'll start doing that again. So it stamps itself.
If it's the end of the month, wouldn't it have to store the previous 30 days?
Yep, so it stamps at least 90 days, so you can go back 90 days, and then it overrides itself after overtime. So it stamps it, and it overrides the one that's 90 days old. So then you can go into, you So then you can go into you, so you can't get live data more than ninety days, but you can go back and look at your bills to see what it is. So we got a year's worth of your bills online and then you're able to see that on that side of things. So if you want just usage, then you get that. If you want hourly increments, then it's a little more narrowed search because it overrides itself.
Are there any, um, controls for the person? So if you have, if I have a smart device and I'm tapped into my meters and information or whatever, is there any actions that I can take on that system? Or is it all just looking at?
Um, so right now it is just looking at that day, data. Um, I'm, we're going to have to get into this once we get further into it, whether they can set up personal alarms, I don't know that answer, so.
And the reason I ask is because if it's hacked, you could potentially have somebody else changing your stuff on your account.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah, they, they can, yeah, they cannot get and change any of the meter data in there. It's viewable, view only. So the only people that can get in there to reprogram stuff is us as a utility, so. Um, so staffing, obviously we think that, that it's important, you know, in a tight labor market to continue to have these type of responses. Um, technology, uh, cost is stabilizing over doing this, you know, a while ago. So we think it was a good timing for us. Um, accurate readings, we don't no longer have any fat fingers on where things are at and what, what things look like. Um, so in, you know, demanding operation E V's, time of use, net metering. So we all think those are important timings, time for us. Also on the meter installation, you can go to a Shackville Public Utilities website. You can see what meters have been changed out. So you can see this map up here. Um, it shows the blues have been changed out, the reds have not been changed out. This updates on a daily matter, um, making sure that we're able to say, yep, that's the ones that need to be changed out. Um, so we just kind of making sure that, uh, our customers know which ones are getting changed out and where we're at. So we're excited that, that we update this on a, on a daily, daily basis. So, um, so we kind of update that both on a water and on electric side of things. So you can go scroll throughout the town, the community and see where things have been changed out, so. But I will stand for questions on A M I. Is there any other questions on A M I and where we're at and kind of where we're going? All right, we'll talk a little bit about new, uh, P F O S and some of the new federal standards. So in twenty twenty-four, um, E P A issued, uh, first ever national, uh, enforceable drinking water standard to protect communities. Um, so we are currently testing those. We've been testing for a couple of years already. Um, in, uh, twenty twenty-seven, by twenty twenty-seven, it's a three-year average. Um, and then we got two years to implement after that. So, um, uh, currently we meet the standards. We have a couple wells that are close, uh, on well number six. We have a, uh, we had a couple of ones that are at four parts for, per million, uh, for trillion, sorry, for, per trillion on that. I apologize for that. Um, so we're working through that and, um, and we're just kind of keeping an eye on this. Um, but this is why we need, um, you know, we're going to need some of the, the, the property that we're talking about in a little bit on, on where things are at. Um, this is because this is a new federal regulation. Um, and, uh, P F O S, um, and, uh, P F O A are the compounds that we're working on. Um, so, uh, so yeah, so we're, we're, we, we know we need to worry about it and keep, keep track of it.
They're, they're currently treatable?
Um, so they are through processes, yep. It, it absolutely is, is through processes. So, um, it is treatable, it's just a matter of what kind of treatment we have. Um, but we need land to do that. Um, so a couple of years ago, our, our commission had approved a hybrid approach. What does that look like? Land acquisitions, um, where we're at, different pressure zones. We have three different pressure zones in the community. We have one on the top side up here. You'll see that, that it, uh, um, in our normal zone, we don't have, uh, some land in, in there. Uh, we have land in our blue zone. Um, and then in the red zone, we also have some land that we're able to, to, to treat that area in those three. So the next slide will show you, um, what treatment looks like at pump house twenty, pump house twelve, pump house twenty-three. We all have the adequate land to do that. Um, and then, so we'll be in good shape on those, uh, to, to treat that. We're really looking at, um, in our, in our main, main zone, we have a raw water line, which you'll see here. On this one, the blue line represents the raw water lines from, uh, six, seven and ten up on top of the, up on top. Uh, we also have a water treatment plant either by the LaZigna Mac Equity sites or the Hawkins site. And then wells nine and eleven, um, by the hospital, um, and then the soccer complex fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Um, and then we can run a raw water line across there. Um, and, uh, then we'll be in good shape to do, to, to get to water treatment. So, um, this pressure zone was, so if you look at this, this boundaries, this is where we have to have some sort of water treatment. If we're going to look across, um, you know, in these areas right here, so, um, yeah, so we're, we're doing that, so.
Mr. Dr.?
Yes.
Uh, just for some context, so we had a couple of options when we were looking at water treatment. Uh, one was decentralized water treatment, so bring everything into one place. Um, when we looked at that, that was very expensive, like we're talking three to four times current water rates, right? To bring everything into one place. Uh, and so we can't, you know, there was this alternative, which is we treat more locally, um, using the pressure zones that we already have. We can utilize, utilize a lot of the infrastructure that's already existing. We don't need to put in a whole bunch of new raw, raw water line pipes, right? Um, and so this is the approach that we thought was best from a financial perspective. Still allow us to meet what we saw as coming regulations, which are now here. Um, and so, you know, we have land in certain places to kind of execute this plan, uh, but we're going to need land, um, still to finish the plan out, um, so.
Um, so, uh, so we think that we got two, two options, uh, Mac Equities, uh, we have some LaZigna land there or, you know, or this other area that we're talking here. Um, these two red boxes are kind of the areas that we're talking about. Um, so we're, we're, we know we need some treatment in this area. We know that land is running out. Um, as you guys, as everyone knows here, development is crazy and it's super exciting to be in a community that is growing like this. But in this area, there's not much of land, uh, available anymore. So, um, this last year we had, uh, on the, on the next slide, this last year we had, um, the gravel pit development, uh, is looking at, at happening. Um, and we looked at, doesn't it make sense for us to put our water treatment in there? Because just across to the right on, right on this is the church addition. We have two wells that we can drill, drill out in the church addition. So, uh, we have one in our C I P well number twenty-two that's going to get drilled, um, uh, next year. We're going to spec it out this year and do it next year. I believe that would be where that one's at. We have another one there, so we think that comes across easy, easy. Um, uh, off to the left with, is where we have, um, nine, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, or fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Um, that can come across and come into the gravel pit site here. And then, uh, six, seven and ten up by, um, uh, by the generation plant is six, seven and ten. We can bring that water over there in this area. So we think this is a great site as well as we, we're going to look at, does it make sense? Maybe when we're, when we're doing water treatment, you know, when we do some of our backflush, does it make sense if, if on our final backflush, can we help and fill the pond? So we're looking at some of those, like what does that water look like? Working with city staff on making sure that everything is, is kosher on the quality of water, um, as well as all the, the drainage in this area and, and the ponding in there. We think this is a good partnership for us to have, um, in this area to make sure that that pond stays, uh, stays full. Um, as well as being efficient stewards and, um, being able to, to help out and be a partnership in this. So, so we're super excited about having, about having it in this area if possible. Um, and, um, and so we're, we're excited about that. We've, we've worked with our architects and say, what does it look like? Um, on the next one, you can see a kind of a little blown up piece that, okay, this would be worst-case scenario. That if we needed a treat for several different chemicals, this is how big the plant would be. There might be a scenario where we only need to treat for one different con, contaminants and then would, then it would be a smaller version of this. But we wanted to make sure that we had enough land that if anything came at us, that we were good stewards and we could provide safe drinking water. So that's why we chose this, this land and this area on what does that look like? Um, so we're excited that it fits on there because otherwise we wouldn't be pursuing it. Um, so the next steps really is, um, voluntary negotiations. We're going through some appraisal property right now on this one. We've already done it on one across the way. And, um, if we're going to do that, we're going to need council support on some of that. So this is not an easy discussion to have by any stretch of the imagination. But as Stafflin and I looked at, looked at this and looked throughout the corridor, um, and what regulations that are coming down, we don't see many options. Besides, we need to find a spot along this corridor and we need a significant amount of land. And we think that this is a good spot, good spot to have that. So, um, we think it's, uh, it's super important that we continue to evaluate our water quality. And when we need to treat, we want to be in a position that we have raw, raw water lines in place, ready to go. And then we can just say, yep, it's going to take us a few years to build it. But if we have to try to take something that's, you know, already all developed up and then dig up roads to put raw water lines in and also service lines, that's a, that's very challenging for us. And trying to keep costs, um, something that people can be afforded, can afford it as well.
So what would it all be prepared to treat? Um, nitrates, manganese, uh, what else?
You know, P F O S.
F O A.
So.
What is it?
P F O A.
Yeah, P F O S, P F O A and P F O S, both of those, um, nitrates, um, and they're pretty, the, the activated carbon, if I'm going to get that right, the terminology. Takes out lots of stuff, so it's not that they, that it just takes out one thing. If you push it through that filter system and across that carbon, it, it grabs those contaminants. And then we have to change those cartridges once, you know, to, to get that out. So, um, you know, that's the, the only other thing to, to, would be different would be is if you went to a reverse osmosis system. Um, but we have enough land that if we absolutely had to, we could do that as well. But we're looking at to treat for nitrates, treat for P F O S, treat for any of those contaminants. We got a whole list of contaminants. Um, we're, we really meet all of those requirements, no problem. Um, we don't have any other ones that we're really concerned about. It's just these emerging ones and the new ones that are, that the government is now kind of coming out with and telling us what we have to do. And we're like, okay, we need to make sure that we're prepared and waiting till we're behind the eight mall already is, is not, is not good stewards of public funds either.
Yeah, it sparked a question that I have and I should have asked under electricity, but, uh, there was a state, some state legislation that new houses have to have a seventy percent reduction in electric use by twenty twenty-eight, I believe it was. And I, I started thinking about that and I'm like, okay, my house is a hundred amp service, nineteen fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Most houses have a two hundred amp service now, new houses. If you reduce that by seventy percent, what amp service would you have? And then what happens if you put a car charger in the garage?
Yes.
So the two don't seem to work together here.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I, I think that you're probably going to still have a two hundred amp service because you're going to want that car charger. You might have some reduction, but if you have two car chargers and some of the other stuff that you're going to want, you're probably going to keep that same size service, right? So you're going to see some reductions and efficiencies. I'm not sure that you can get that efficient. I mean, I think maybe if you go geothermal and do some of those things like that, we're going to be able to drive down some of those, your heating costs to be more efficient. Maybe that takes away from natural gas and/or some electricity on air conditioning load. Um, so that's kind of really, to me, that's probably one of the only ways you're going to be able to solve that crunch. I mean, you got L E D lights pretty much in every house now. You don't use much on your lighting. Um, you got some air conditioning load and you got some chargers and then you got some heating load, um, and different things like that.
Natural gas furnace is twelve hundred watts, right?
Right, but, but you may take away from the natural gas component of it, right?
But the natural gas isn't a seventy percent reduction of electricity.
Yeah, I, but I mean, I think there's going to be some modifications on that. I, I mean, I think that, that would be a stretch, but I mean, uh, we'll, we'll try to meet any of those mandates that, that we have to, right? I mean, we, we, uh.
Well, that's a crazy mandate.
Yeah.
My opinion.
Yep, and, and we are all for, we have a hundred percent requirement, requirement contract. We're all for making sure that we're, we got the right renewable portfolio. But to get to a hundred percent renewable and have a stable grid is also a challenge. So we're working through some of those things as well. So, um, on the gravel pit development and kind of water treatment on that side of things, um, uh, I know that we're not asking tonight to make those final decisions on some of those things. But, um, if there's something that you want more information on, um, this is kind of the direction that, that we're going down, um, at, at Shackville Utilities. Um, because we know we have to do something and we have to be prepared. And, um, I know these are not easy discussions, um, and we don't take them lightly either. Um, but, um, and, and we want to give fair price for property and hopefully we can go through that process and we don't have to do that. But if we can't come to a fair price, also it's not good stewards of, of public funds to pay more than the value of a piece of property. So that's where we kind of hit this roadblock, like we absolutely want to get to appraisals and we want to do the right thing and, and do all that. But if, if we can't, then we are going to be back, uh, back in front of you to say, all right, what do we do to make sure that for the future, that we're able to supply, um, good quality water to this community?
Greg, you didn't say the words, but you have it on your slide and we're talking eminent domain. And that's the, what the process is used for, for the public's good use. Is that something that you're foreseeing or is there negotiations still going on in good faith?
So currently we are getting the appraisals done right now and then we are going to make the good faith effort and, and to buy the property without going through that eminent domain process. And we hope to do that, but, um, there's also been some challenges. I think, uh, uh, the developer tried to buy it. I don't know what the, the details on that are and, um, you know, and so if, if we run into challenges, um, there's only one other thing we can do and that's the eminent domain process, right? And it, I think it's clear that the eminent domain process is for public good, right? And, and, and not just for some wild project that we want to do. This is for safe water and I'm just not sure, as you can look across the, across the area, there's just not lots of parcels left in this corridor.
Would that process overrule developers coming in to try to purchase that land?
Um, so it doesn't matter who owns it, correct? If, if it's for public need, um, if, if the developer would buy it, um, we, we can, then we can get that from them. So, um, we've worked, we've talked to the developer and, and, uh, we've got a good working relationship with the developer of there. So I don't think if, if they would, would work out a deal there, I'm not super concerned about it. We're also, um, you know, there's also a, a well in the area that they used. It's a high-volume well that they used and we talked to the developer and we're, we're going to test the water quality of that to see if we want to put that in there. And they're, they're like, we'll work out something that rather than drilling one of these other wells, maybe we can use that. So we've, we've hired somebody to inspect the casing on it. What does that look like? Um, if we can save some money for our ratepayers, we're going to look at doing that as well. So we're going to test that water, so.
Sure.
So we're working through that process right now as well. They want to use it for some of their remediation of their soils, um, but then after that, they, they said that if we can work out something that, that will do that. Some of the challenges is we need to own so many feet around it, some regulations that, so we need to make sure we can do that. Um, but we've, we've talked to the developer and our water department's already been out there, looked at there, um, and, and we're looking at the next steps and testing the water.
Thank you.
Greg, really quick, you talked about, um, paying a fair price and talked, talked about getting appraisals. How many are those that you're?
So we, we will have two appraisals done, um, and then we'll, we'll.
Work from there.
The commission's decision, right? But I'll bring that back to them and, and like, here's the two appraisals and then they make the decision what we want to offer. And then, and, and then we'll go from there. And if, if there's negotiations on, after that, we'll bring that back to this, to, to, to Shackville Public Utilities Board. Um, but if we can't, we can also go through the process of, we can continue to negotiate even if we go through the eminent domain, um, approval process. But that, that, just because you pass the resolutions that you're going to do that, doesn't mean you have to, right? You can still negotiate in good faith and if you can get an agreement, which we always want to do. So we haven't had to go through that. Some people also like friendly condemnations for tax, tax purposes and stuff like that. So we don't know what, where there's, where this party's at as well.
Okay.
And the reality, there's a lot of misconceptions about the eminent domain process because of, you know, you've heard a story that, you know, the community wants to tear down this great community housing and then put something that has nothing to do with public value in it. Well, you know, that really isn't the day-to-day operation of eminent domain. Essentially, when you, when you have an eminent domain process, you, you have a piece of, of property that you've actually actively been trying to buy.
Right.
And, and the price from the seller is up here because the seller wants to get their best price that they can possibly get. And they know it's government and they know that they have, you know, often a leg up because it's government. And so as you enter into this process, you know, you know, the government side of the house is going to say, okay, well, we want to give you a fair price. Here's, here's a, a, an appraisal of the property. Well, I'm the owner, I, I disagree with that. Okay, well then you give me your appraisal. So the owner comes in and gives their appraisal. And, and ultimately what you want to do is to find that middle ground, but if you can't, I mean, this price is never sustainable. And you have to come down to a price where it's fair. And often it is actually more than, than the fair market value of the property around it. So that's also something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Am I understanding there's two different properties that you're doing the same process on?
Um, so we will finalize. Um, so we will finalize it and only bring one, I believe, back to, for the body to, to do, to approve. I mean, the other one, um, the other one, there's, uh, the MAC Equity one that we've, we've had some discussions with. We, we thought we would try to buy that one. That one's a little more challenging because we, um, for eminent domain, you can only acquire what you need. So we have to subdivide that parcel. We can't, it's not affordable to buy the whole thing, um, for us to buy the whole thing. So now you have to.
Could you subdivide it and sell off what you don't need?
You could, um, but what they're asking for it and we don't know if that's good steward of, I don't think you, you can, but that would be under negotiations. But on, under eminent domain, you cannot.
You cannot, because then.
Yeah.
You can only take an imminent, imminent domain, what you're going to use.
Correct.
And, and so you can't just have.
Trying to make a profit for whatever.
Exactly.
Got it.
Yeah, so I mean, if you could, if you, if you had a negotiations where you wanted to buy the whole thing and our commission had the discussion about that.
And that's perfectly okay.
And we were three to four million dollars apart and that's real money for our ratepayers.
The, the boxes look roughly the same size on your map here.
Yeah, the, we need a little more on the other one because there's a hillside involved where the, the Hawkins one is a more of a flat parcel of land. So it works better for, for development and we're not building on a hillside. Um, so the other one is, is on a hillside, so we got some challenges and need a little bit more land on that one.
Putting a pipe 30 feet, 40 feet down in one spot on a hill and 10 feet in another area.
Pieces, we do own that property on the bottom of the hill that we would be happy to negotiate some ponding for the other development if that's what they wanted to choose to do. I mean, there are some ways to negotiate with them on what we could do for them in public good as well.
On both properties or just one?
Uh.
That would be the one that, um, on MAC Equity side.
So on the, on the Hawkins one, I think that the ponding is going to be the ponding in the middle. And, and our property will also put, uh, their, any of the storm water into the pond as well as what we need to figure out is how are we going to maintain the water level in that pond? And, and, um, we think that that's a good partnership for us to have as, um, as a utility as well. So, um, so we don't need specific ponding at the Hawkins site because it's going to be the big pond in the middle. And, and then we're going to look at how do we put some raw water in there as well to make sure that, that, that pond always has water in it. All right, any other questions on, on that, um, on water treatment, gravel pit, kind of eminent domain process? Um, we're not asking for approvals right now.
I'll just make one more comment, just kind of go back to President's Creek point about, this was a, we started looking at this type of thing, I think, three years ago. Um, looking at the difference between a hybrid and a central location. So it's something that we've like really, really thought through and, and gotten a lot of information on. It's not just something that we're, now the mandates are coming down and we're pulling from the sky. Um, so I think that's important as Justin, as President Krieg mentioned earlier, that we've really put a lot of thought into where this needs to go and how to make it the best for those ratepayers. So I think it's an important point to end with.
And keeping the cost.
Keeping costs, exactly.
Yeah, water treatment's going to be expensive, there's just no doubt about it. I mean, it's just, um, uh, what we're also, what we like about the hybrid option as well is if we have something in one area, maybe we don't have that in another area of our community and we can, we only have to do the treatment for that pressure zone, right? So we think that there might be some, rather than treating all of our wells for everything, is there a certain area that we need to treat for and then we can handle that, so.
Do you have a procedural question about the water treatment? Because I know for reverse osmosis, there's a membrane and they push all the water through and all that stuff stays on the other side. Then you come and back flush and push it away, which I guess would wind up in that pond?
Uh, no, so we would put that down the sewer system to met council first. And only maybe a back flush would be at the final one if there's less, or levels that are sustainable that we don't have to worry about, maybe we would do that. Otherwise it would just be raw water that goes in there. So, um, nope, that, none of that would go back into that because then that would be runoff without being treated. So that would have to be, um, you know, like, uh, the, the activated carbon, then the, those are filters that get taken out and, and disposed of. Um, where a flush like that would be to the, to the met council. So we've worked with the city, where can we put, uh, the sewage, you know, it's basically sewage down the sewage system and, and then that would go to the met council.
PFOS pond.
No, don't do that.
So we're not, we're not doing this because our water currently is unsafe, are we?
Uh, correct, it is, currently meets all regulations, absolutely meets it. It's just, um, if development, all the development happens, this is a substantially more of a problem. And I don't think it's a good use of public funds to just ignore potential things that could happen.
What's more of a potential problem?
Um, I, I mean, I think that the PFOS and the, the new regulations are going to be what the thing that we're going to have to take care of first. Um, nitrates have stabilized in our community and we're at, um, all but one well. We're less than, than half the, the limit. And we have plans to, the one that's half the limit is not in the long range. We're going to decommission that well. So we think that, uh, really nitrates are not an issue on our system, um, unless we have a spike of some sort. But really as property gets developed, it's gotten more stable than, than not, more volatile. So I think that, I don't think, I mean, although we can treat for nitrates, if we want to run that down to zero, the, the regulation is 10 parts per million on that. And we're at like four in one well and most of our wells are three, two point some to three, so.
So just so I'm clear, we're gonna, you're gonna build this because there might be a problem down the road that you have?
Oh, no, 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 I would not say that at all. I would say we need to acquire the land and put in raw water lines and be prepared that if we have a problem, that we can build it then.
They're finding new chemicals all the time and then it could be a spill or an industry that could contaminate.
The other thing that I, the other thing that I think we would do and our commission has to approve this, um, we would probably bring some of our wells together and mix them because by mixing is a form of treatment, right? So you, you dilute it down, so, so you treat everyone the same. You put the pressure zone, you bring that into a mixing station, test the water. If that doesn't meet regulations, you build treatment.
Well, currently you told me everything's meeting regulations and nitrates have, have gone down.
Correct.
So.
If I may.
Yeah.
This is a matter of when, not if, because we've already had this ball rolling for three or four years now before even the PFOS stuff became a big deal. We are going to find something in the water and go, oh, that's icky, we don't want to drink that. It's going to happen. Right now it's, you know, we have this much icky and we're okay with this much. I mean, you can argue about if the state statute better than was good enough for Shakopee, but we, there will be a point when we cross a line or the state makes a line that we've already crossed. Uh, and if we're looking 15, 20, 30 years down the line when Shakopee's even more built up, then we're looking at, you know, adding the zero to that cost of building. Because we're, if we have a centralized plant, we basically have to cross Shakopee two times. You can bring it from the well back to the well after it's been treated. With, uh, the individual, if we treat every well as is, then we've got massive replication on all of the wells. Because, you know, we have to treat magnesium, iron magnesium, everything everywhere instead of just grouping it up and having fewer resources that do the same thing. Economies of scale. So if we still have to do that in 15, 20, 30 years, it's going to be five, 10 times the amount of money. Uh, and we can't put pipes under the ground after there's a lot of buildings there. So this is the better way to do it, even if we don't have to, have to, have to. We're going to have to and it's just fiscally pragmatic to do.
My question is, what are you anticipating to treat in 20 years from now from growth?
Um.
And since you don't know exactly what the icky's going to be, are you going to build this today? For that icky that you don't, you can identify?
That's the problem, just putting the pipes in the ground and so we bring it to the treatment plant. Then we can put whatever widget gets rid of it.
Right. So I think that also, um, we want to make sure that we have enough property at each one of these locations to treat pretty much everything. And that's what we do. So we, if, if, if some contaminant comes in, we want to be able to treat it. So we, we want to acquire enough property so as the development happens, um, as we looked at some of these, though that layout is worst case scenario, treating pretty much every contaminant that we know of now. Now, if there's a new contaminant that comes that we don't know about and we need additional land, we're going to have to address that. But right now, all the, the engineers that we talk to, this is enough to treat any contaminant that we know of right now, including PFOS, PFOA and the forever chemicals. Um, so we can only prepare for what, what that is right now. Um, if, if it, if it happens that we need something else, then we're going to have to address it as, as a commission. What does that look like and how do we address that contaminant? So, um.
The, the list of chemicals that are being restricted changes every six months. They add more chemicals to the list of, uh, uh, restricted evaluating or authorizing chemical hazards. Um, that changes, so we don't know what's going to be the next one. In fact, PFOS was a great chemical at one time. It's, it's Teflon basically. Of course, they, they kept Teflon off the list, but, uh, everything else related to it is, is on that list, yeah. My pans are gone, but anyway, um, so you're, you're just adding and so if you have that, that source, that collection point, you can just add the different filter type. It makes a lot of sense to at least get the pipes in the ground.
I think a good case in point would be that parcel between Home Depot and, uh, the movie theater. If someone bought that and they did soil testing and it's just garbage, can't do anything, it needs a whole bunch of remediation. Who knows what's buried where that's leaching into the soil, into the water table, some aquifer. It could be a matter of years and then it just finally hits the water table and then we start pulling it out. So we, we want to be ahead of this.
City dumps.
Basically, unfortunately.
Or farm dumps.
The other thing I'll add is that the regulation on the forever chemicals is, you know, all of two months old. And we didn't know what that level is going to be. Uh, I think the preference of the federal government would be that that level is zero. Um, but they set it at basically what they think you can test for now, given current technology. As that technology improves, our expectation is that that level will continue to go down. So while we meet the current standards, which are basically what we can test for, as testing technology gets better, we think that standard's going to move. Um, and so we're eventually going to have to treat for it. Um, the other thing is that that chemical's not that old and our water is probably around 50 years, is that right?
Yeah.
And so the water that we're pulling from the aquifer, right, especially in those newer wells, right, may not have that chemical in it now. But when we have water that did in fact have Teflon or whatever the forever chemical was, finally make it to us, right, into the well point, then we're going to have to address those issues, right? So it's something that we anticipate we will have to address at some point. Right now, for the regulations that came out two months ago, right, we are okay. But we anticipate that soon we will not.
And, and we, we have it in, in number six, well, number six is where we have some that we have detected low, low levels of it. Um, our other wells, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, newer, newer, we had almost zero detection. So we're also going to look at, does it make sense to drill a new well or what does another well look like where we slowed down that one? Um, two meetings ago, or was it last meeting, we talked about operational, how do we use our system? We're only going to use six if we pump it with seven to make sure, because when the combined discharge, then it gets even lower. So we want to make sure that we're always proactively looking at different approaches, um, to, to make it a safe drinking water. So, um, we meet all those regulations and we're excited about that. Um, but we also understand, as Mr. Krieg said, that if something changes, um, we don't want to have, not have a plan. Um, and really be like, okay, now we have to tear down that apartment complex because that's our only spot for a treatment. Right, so that, that's what we're trying to avoid is like, okay, where can we get a spot? As something gets developed, making sure that, that it kind of fits our needs. But we need to be in that corridor, otherwise we have to, I mean, I think we're already at a 24 inch pipe in some of the areas. Um, and if we have to go somewhere else, you know, we're pulling a, trying to get a 36 inch pipe because that's how many wells we're having in this area. So, I mean, we're talking 1,200 gallons per minute per well and we've got six, seven and 10 in one area. We've got nine, 11, um, 15, 16, 17 that can go in the soccer complex. So you start putting five, seven wells in one pipe, it just gets very large. So to put it in now as the developments are happening, save us millions of dollars.
So homework. Does anybody know what the regulations are on out of water that you buy at the store? There is none. There's zero. Ironic, isn't it?
It is.
All right, carry on.
All right, any other questions on that before I move on? All right, thank you very much. Uh, backflow has been a, a little bit of a hot topic on, on some, so there's about 6,200 backflows, uh, on our system. Um, 4,200 residential, 2,000 commercial, um, backflow assemblies. Um, in 2023, we had about 58% of them, uh, in compliance, um, 70% on commercial. Um, it was also very interesting and, and I think that we had good discussion that our commission is, is we have nearly 40% failure rates on these backflow assemblies when, um, because we also offer some testing, we do charge for that. But if they make, uh, if they make, uh, an appointment with us, we have water operators that are certified, uh, backflow inspectors and repairs. Um, and it's pretty interesting that 37 to 39% of the backflows are, are a failure rate.
Can you start with why this is happening?
Sure.
Can you, can it, now backflow preventers are required in houses that have automatic, or outdoor sprinkler systems, right? Is, and other industrial places?
Yeah, I'll talk about that a little bit.
One of the, one of the problems is, is that the general public is assuming that this is just you guys being bad guys, making everybody's life difficult.
Actually, they believe it's the city. That's making the decision to make everybody do this.
Let's, let's talk a little bit about it.
There's, there's building code that was passed by the state in 2020 that requires this to be implemented by a certain time and a certain compliance. And that's what I read and have been sharing, have been sharing.
So backflow, um, really is, is, um, stops the, the water from going back into our system. So this is, uh, on all commercial and industrial properties have it on their system. Um, yes, sprinkler systems on the outside of somebody's house, they'll have a backflow assembly. Um, so if, for example, if there's some pressure, some additional pressure, if somebody puts, uh, maybe they put a pump to their irrigation system or they're blowing it out, you can't push anything back, the backflow assembly will stop anything to go back into the house and potentially into the water system. The other one is if we had a water main break, for example, we could lose pressure on our system. And is there a siphoning effect pulling back out of the house or the business to that? And we don't have a lot of water main breaks, but I mean, not to say that we don't have some, but if there's a loss in pressure, then that also could get sucked back. This backflow, backflow assembly stops anything from going back and keeps it outside, um, on a, on an irrigation system or in a business. So, um, so we think it's a, in 2006, any home, 2016 and newer that has an irrigation system, um, yes, it states that, that they require to have a backflow assembly. And through the city and their plumbing code to assemble the first one, they say if you have an irrigation system, you have to have one, right? And a back.
Let me, let me correct that, it's not the city's plumbing code, it's the state building codes, which include the plumbing codes that the city adopts because are required to.
Yes.
Same thing.
Yes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Continue.
Um, and so anything 2016 is, it does say yes, that 2016 and newer. Um, our body has looked at this and said, what's the difference between a 2016 and 2015, 1990 some? And said, that's just as much as an exposure for the water system. And we have adopted, uh, our personal policy, our, our water policy manual to say, all backflow preventers need to be tested. We think that's prudent, we think that there's no more exposure, um, one way or another. Um, so we, we've said, if we're getting 40% failure rate and something happens and something, and there's something bad that does happen, it's the water purveyor that's going to get pulled into the lawsuit and what is that, what happened and how did that happen? And we're just trying to follow and be in compliance with 2016 and newer. But our personal, our, our policy, water policy manual says all backflows.
We're not the only city that does require all backflows.
Uh, that is correct. So, I mean, so we have Alka River that does it now, we've got Owatonna that does it now, um, we have Rochester that does it now. Um, so those are some of the major ones that do it.
Woodbury, Prairie Lake, they all have it on their website, I checked. I don't know to what extent their personal policy is, but they have adopted what's required from the state statute, building code.
And that's what you're looking at for us to adopt for you.
Yeah, so at, at a future meeting, I'll work with, with, we're not asking for any formal adoption at this meeting. We're saying like, okay, these are what, we've, we've had some complaints about this, you guys get some calls, we get calls on it on a regular basis. Um, but this is what we have been following. Um, and we think that it's important to understand failure rates as well to say like, is this really working? What do we do? And we think it is. And, and when you start getting 37 to 39% failure rates, it's pretty scary that if something did, was to have an exposure, that it could get into our system. And really it probably mostly affects that house because it would probably go into their own house. But we think that. But we think that that's, we should be trying to protect everybody we can.
You know, the first time I heard about this, and I'm going to date myself again, was on a show called Quincy. He was a medical examiner. So people died clearly, so it's clearly an issue, but it has been for a long time. And now it's being addressed legally, so.
So why is there such a high failure rate? Is there a certain type or brand that's just?
You know, we've seen it all over the board on brands. We haven't, I think it's just that some of these, I think this failure rate goes down over time that, you know, because it might be 10 years old already, right? And it's failing, it failed, and then we fix it or they get a new one. I think next year's test, it'll pass, right? It won't have the same high failure rate. I think a lot of this high failure rate is just because it's a lot of first time testers and they're not testing them. They haven't been testing them, so. And there's a baffle in there that stops, so there might be, sometimes parts are not very expensive to fix them and repair them. And so it's not too bad to do, but it just needs to be done, so. And some of them are not repairable and then they need to get a new backflow assembly. Or we've also, as the commission said, what if somebody can't afford it? So we've also looked at, like, we can lock it out and we don't charge to have the system locked out until they want to get it tested. So we will do that free of charge. We'll go put a lock on it, say, when you want your irrigation system? Or I'm not going to use it this year. Look at all the rain we get and I'm just not going to use my irrigation system. We will be more than happy to go out and lock your system out and say, when you want it, you get it tested and then you can put it back online, so. So we do have options if somebody says that they just can't afford it as well.
Is there any public health grants potential?
As far as for the testing?
Paying for the testing or for the?
I have not seen any. I don't know if Lon, if you have seen any grants on testing side of things. I have not on that, on this one. I mean, we did on the lead service line. We've got some grants on that, which we will touch base on and stuff. We got some to be able to identify lead service lines. We got a grant, so that's not costing our ratepayers anything. So we look at them from time to time, but we haven't, we haven't seen grants on this one.
It would be in the utility's best interest to put out as much information as you can about why this is happening, that you're required to do this by state statute under the building codes that were adopted in 2020 or whatever version it was.
A man whose email address is as follows, who's specifically saying that this must occur.
Just link that right over to you guys.
So, yeah, so we will continue to try to educate. We've put out letters and hopefully that's getting to some people. There is a National Backflow Prevention Day is August 16th. So this is something that I know it's right in our local community, but it's also nationwide. People are looking at these things and doing this. And really, I think over the next years, you'll see more and more communities all around us get on board and say, it just needs to be done. I think there's, and just, I don't think that we need that exposure as a utility, not to say we don't support backflows and where we're at.
The other thing I would ask is that you, your commission, start thinking about state legislation to allow the utility to train individuals on the maintenance and replacement because the current law requires anybody that's doing that to have such a background in plumbing when they're not, they're not building a skyscraper, they're replacing one little component or rebuilding it. And you should be able to train them, individuals.
Yeah, we currently have three certified testers or four? Five, sorry, five certified testers on our staff already that have taken the class to do that. So we currently do offer that and we'll continue to explore options to make sure people are in compliance. And so we are doing that.
Because I think, I think what happens is that the season comes around where people are coming out of winter, they're starting to think about it. And so there's this mad rush for people to use their irrigation systems, get their inspections and all this stuff done or replacements done. So the private market is in a position to where they can charge high rates because the demand is there. And I kind of, that's kind of what I want to address, or not me, you, you guys to address.
No, we will continue to explore that and we'll bring stuff back.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to a few things that you had said, Mayor. I do agree that I think we, the more you get out information about this, the better. Things I have fielded there, there were complaints on, they just found out about it by getting a letter in the mail about a fine. So they just felt more information in however you guys deem appropriate to do it. Another question I thought, so I heard that, so you have five testers on the SPUC side of it. Have you guys ever thought about charging less than what others are charging for as a service? That's another thing I've heard is people are like, you know, these guys are charging 100, 150, more, like they're, you know, more than. And it's just an expense that they're taking on that during these times that they're not happy about. Have you guys ever thought about maybe being less than and?
Yeah, we absolutely have thought about it and last year we were about $20 less. I think the thing that us and the commission needs to wrestle with is just workloads in general. Like, can we support that many as well? Or is it a combination of Shakopee Utilities does what we can? We try to get as many people testers as possible, not really undercut the margins, but just try to say like, okay, we'll do what we can, have testers. But we also have our daily rounds that we have to do and testing and water and everything else we do. So it's just a real seasonal thing and to ramp up, you know, staffing for a short period of time is tough as a utility. But we'll definitely look at that and I think we can, you know, we'll take that as recommendation and we'll have some discussions internally. The other one that I had just the other day, I took a phone call and I called them back. As they said, can you put it as part of my monthly bill? Like, maybe it's X amount per month and then you're, then we test it. So we will, we will look at those and bring some of those options back to our commission and our board to say, hey, do we want to think about it this way rather than $100? Maybe somebody wants to pay the $10 a month and then we'll just already have it being able to test it like that. So there's some things that we're looking at internally and how does the process work? Because we're learning as we're going on this situation as well.
As is the, as is the community. Another thing I, do you guys still advertise? Do you guys still have a list on your website of companies that you recommend or?
Yes, there is still a list of them on there that we, the first year we published it and we published some rates with it. But as they change from time to time, some people say like, well, I don't, if I'm starting up the irrigation system, I give them a discount on this and, or if it's a service call, it's this rate. So it got very confusing for customers, so we took rates off and we just said, these are a list of testers and then they have to call to get that. But we were challenged with putting a rate on there and it not being an all-in rate. And somebody, one might have a service call and one might not, or a truck route. So we just said, you know, you can call and here's a list and then we just tell them what we charge.
I have one last thing I'm going to add to that. Have you thought about connecting with those people that you list and ask them, say, hey, if you're going to be listed on our list, maybe I'll agree on a price, so no matter who they call, it's the same price, no matter what? As a, as a way to be, we're going to put you on our website, so you're going to get business from this, but we're all going to, let's all agree on a price, no matter who they call. Joe is doing the same price as Mike.
They would have to set up a contract with folks.
That's collusion.
I don't know, I'm just, they're all ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can, we're open to all types of communications and discussions about this. We know that, that it's important to get done and we understand this is not an easy topic to talk about. But we also don't take, as you can see with water treatment as well, we don't take this lightly. It's making sure that our water is clean and safe. So, I mean, that's just a, it's a balanced approach, I think, that we have to look at and we will look at that. We'll look at other options, communications, did somebody miss the first letter? The first letter that they ever got didn't say that there was going to be a penalty. This is, okay, they're more than 60 days behind. And then they get this another letter that states, did they get the first letter? We've had some challenges, I think, with some of the mail and timeliness of the mail and stuff like that. So I think there's a combination of things. We've also tried to get people like, hey, sign up for Smart Hub because that's a, if you want us to email you and text you and doing some of those things, that's really good for them to get in our system to be able to sign up for other services as well. So we'll continue to evolve this backflow. We think that there might be one more time. I mean, I think there's a couple of topics that I would like to come back to the city council and get approved of, you know, giving the water purveyor the ultimate authority on this. And then if you have that in there, Elk River did that, and then their utility handles everything. There's some confusion, I think, sometimes on some of the regulations. Sometimes it says the city shall do X and other ones it says the water purveyor shall do this. So there's some confusion on that, I think, if you read different rules and regulations. So we're looking at trying to clean up some of those languages between the two bodies and say, if you give us this, then we'll be able to handle it this way. You can deflect people and say, that's Shakopee Public Utilities, we gave them authority and this is the resolution or the ordinance that you did on that. So I think there's ways to clean that up for better communication.
Thank you.
Anything else on backflow? All right, EV chargers. I've had some emails and dialogues with people like, okay, where's EV chargers? Should we add more EV chargers onto our system? This map shows these red spots are kind of the different spots that we have EV chargers. We have two ports at Shakopee Public Utilities. We've got South Bridge Dog Park, we got two ports. We have two at the community center, Lewis Street Parking Lot. We have four public ones, Hy-Vee, Goodwill, Ford and Dodge, Gamma Vacuum. So there's kind of scattered throughout the community. We look at, should there be more? Should there be, you know, not less, but should we add to where we're at? Some of the challenges that we have had over the last year or so is, you know, since inception on the chargers that we have on our system, we've sold about 2,500 kilowatt hours at $457 in electric sales. We've spent significant monies to get these in there. We think it's an important part. We think if we get grants, we should do them. But really, for right now, the utility has kind of slowed down on this and said, all right, we have some scattered throughout our community, mostly level twos. There's one level three in there and we're really waiting for people to use them more before we take the next step. So, yes, we think it's important, but we also understand that we don't want to subsidize it with regular ratepayers money for something that's really not turning us an investment. So that's kind of where we're at. We continually, we think that more and more EVs will come. We think most people are charging them at night, right? When if you have an EV, you're plugging in at night, you run all day and then you charge at night. So they're just not using a lot of these at our public things. But it's good to know that they can come here and get charged and charged. Every once in a while, we see somebody at the utility with them as well, so. So that's kind of where we're at on EV chargers, so we're just kind of taking the pause effect right now. And we'll see if we get some dealerships that want to do it, apartment complexes are doing it a little bit more. Some restaurants have asked about it, so we'll see where that goes.
How do we monitor when these go out and they're not usable? I think that's the biggest complaint I hear is when it's not working, who do you call? Or because then they'll just move on to the next one.
Right. We have a website that we can go, Brad Carlson kind of can go on and look at that website, whether they're working. I don't know if there's a sticker by them that says, call this if not working, or if people just move on and don't call us. You know, we can try to check them a little bit more if they're making sure they're available. We have a website we go on and that's how we build people and we can look at the usage and we kind of get this.
Right, and that was one of my comments is because a lot of these, you know, you had NXL way up there, but like Plug Share, Electric by America, a lot of these will have, they'll rate them. And so then people will avoid some of these because of the rate that they're just not dependable, that they're going to be usable when they get there.
Not the rate they're paying to use it, but the rate though.
The rating, yeah.
Right, their rating, like if they're not dependable to be, so why are they going to go to that location and use it? They're going to move on to the next one, so.
Yeah, so I think we'll just have to keep monitoring that, but that's how we kind of do that is we have a, you know, that website that we can go on and look at the usage and where that's at.
New technology is going to probably run into some of that too.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move on to financial results and where things are at there. So in our electric fund, we've had another strong year. We continue to grow. You know, we are paying for things in cash, as you can see on this one. We were able to build that substation. We didn't have to borrow money for that. So we had a good year in our electric fund. And then in our operations side of things on the financial results, you know, total revenues was like $63 million and capital contributions was 1.5 million. So, you know, we're about $160, $65 million on that side of things. So we had a good year on that, on our water side of things. We had, we've been doing some projects, so we had a little dip in cash. We took some extra depreciation on meters, so we had to take some depreciation out expense out a little quicker because we're changing out all of our meters, even though some of the meters were scheduled to depreciate longer. So we had to take a little bit of a, a little bit of a loss on that side of things. We still came in on the positive, but not as much as normal this year with all the rain. You know, our irrigation revenues are probably not going to be what they're going to, what they've been in past. So we kind of monitor that on a regular basis with all the water that we're getting into our water fund. And really, I think the one that's really, just to talk about on the last slide and the pilot and some of the agreement that both of these bodies have looked upon is in 2019, there was a change on how we did that to 2020 on the water side of things. You see that dip, but you see the kind of the line in the middle was the electric fund absorbed some of that difference. Pretty flat line in 2020, a little bit up in 2021, but then really we've had some good growth in '22 and '23 throughout the community and some of our electric sales. You know, I think that we're probably fairly flat this year. We might see just a little dip this next year. We had a large user in the Shutterfly Building that was a large customer for us. We're excited that we just met with the new tenants that are going in there this last week. Again, they're even talking about expansion, so I don't think this is a long-term dip. I think this is a ramp up. We're working on other significant users. Really, that if a couple of those users would come into our system, it would not surprise me to increase by 15 to 20% on the utility side of things on where we're at, which then ultimately helps out with the city side of things as well on the 6% of gross revenue going back, so.
Is that a water user or electric?
Both of them are, one of them is a heavy of both of them. The other one is more heavy electric. So we've had some discussions that they've, we had a letter of support for 20 meg and our system is like 110 meg. So they wanted a letter of support that we could support 20 meg on the West End, real big user. So we don't know if it happens, but we, from time to time, Mr. Christy and I work on these things and we give letters of support and Mr. Krieg signed it and I signed the letter of support like, hey, we would allocate this for that. Our new substation is a 28 MVA transformer, so we could support it out on that end. If we would get a user like that, then we would go into, hey, we need to get another lineup in there to make sure that any other development in that area we can support. So we have the new water, the new water tower, 750,000 gallons of water. We got one new well up there. We would start drilling a second well because they were looking at like 175,000 gallons per day, which is about one well. So we would probably drill a second well up in that pressure zone. Or, you know, if they're in the lower pressure zone, we would drill it in 22, 23 area in the Church Edition, something like that.
So specifically that new area where we're talking out of the West End, do you have kind of capabilities and capacities that you kind of are supplying the city with?
Correct, so, yep, so we've got the substation that's energized right now and it's 28 MVA. We've got a couple of megawatts on there. Like I said, our system is like 110, so we could increase our system.
Just balancing the different users, I suppose, that might want to use.
And the other one was kind of closer to our, to our building there. That was in a vacant building and they were, they were looking at 10 MVA. Not much water, but they were asking and we had to do some calculations and what we'd have to do to our system to handle that out of the Dean Lake Substation. So, and we could do that. We'd probably have to add another circuit through there, but we would get them up and running, a little bit smaller, maybe five, seven MVA and then run that new circuit out there and get them to that 10 MVA. So, I mean, we've talked to certain significant businesses that really like what's going on in Shakopee and are excited to try to make things work. So we work on this all the time and making sure that we've planned for that. And that's one of the things that we have to do with our water treatment plant is make sure we plan for if something happens because we may get a company that requires X amount of water and then we can do something like that and act quickly.
So why households have to cut their power use by 70% in your dishwasher and your shower head and all these things have to use less water, these guys like the big users to use more of all this stuff.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And we have to be ready for them. So, so yeah, so no, so this is, um, this is all I had, um, for, for this. Um, and, uh, really it was, uh, you know, a really good year for us and it was, uh, we had, we had good growth, uh, strong economy. We think that things are, continue to grow in this area and we continue to have a great partnership on all these things and, and planning and, and trying to make sure how this all fits together. And, and so, so thank you for your support, um, as well and everything that we do as well. So.
I'd just like to say from a, a staff perspective, how much we appreciate the very strong partnership that we have with Shakopee Public Utilities. Uh, it's an exceptional organization and, um, we all know five years ago, we had some issues, but I will tell you something. Uh, it's, it's, it's been a fantastic relationship the last couple of years and, and I know I can call Greg or Greg can call me. And if we have any issues, we can get them worked out relatively quickly. Um, it's just been excellent and it's great to have a strong partner on the other side of the table that, that is willing to look out for the, uh, benefit of the community as well. Thank you.
I would, I would just say as much information as you can give people the better so that they, I mean, they're assuming that you're the bad guys and you're just doing what you're required to do by state statute and everything, federal rules and whatever. And, and people aren't aware of that. So.
Yeah, we will continue to do that and we'll take the, the input back and we'll, we'll try to, to beef up some of our stuff. You know, I know that we talk about that internally. We, we, we had some struggles like with AMI and backflow LED service line and how do you get all that information out and, and what part, even when you send stuff gets thrown in the trash. So, um, we will definitely continue to work on that and try to get, get as much on social media as we can. That seems to be the, where we get the most traction. So.
And the, the other area of my personal experience is the May 22nd billing, it said, you know, May 22nd billing, I received it at my house on the 30th. So it took, you know, eight, nine days to get there. I drove down to utility because if I would have turned around and mailed it and assumed the same amount of time to get from there to here, it would have got there late. I know you can't fix the post office. However, the next thing I got from the utility about scratch your pipe and send a picture in, that was stamped and I received that in three days.
I got it the same day. It was due that day.
So.
For a paperless option, for those of you that want that on time.
Get rid of the cell phone and the computer.
Yeah, I will, I will, yeah, I will say that, um.
I don't receive it. It is paperless, right?
I will say that we have almost 10,000 of our customers that are, that are paperless right now. So that's super exciting that they can get it. I mean, not, it's not for everybody, but really it does help that, that when you sign up for some of those, that we can email it to you so you can make sure you get it. You can also still get it mailed if you want. You can have it both ways, but we think the prudent thing to do is like, do we want to always waste that piece of paper and, and do the same thing and goes into recycling? Or is it just a file that's on yours or on your phone that you have it that you can go look at at any time? And that's what we're trying to, trying to drive people to do more in that, just to be good stewards of the land as well.
Anything else? Okay.
Mayor, if you want to have, uh, the utility close their meeting, um, the rest of the evening is devoted specifically to city business.
Okay.
We even know where we're not wanting.
Or you can stay and take it outside.
Can I get a motion to close the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission meeting?
Some. Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Shakopee Public Utilities meeting is closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys coming and, and your presentation and all the work that you do for Shakopee. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's, uh, entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
All right, we are back on the air, folks. Uh, concluded our joint meeting with the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission. And, uh, that brings us to item 10A, city bill list.
No questions for me.
Any questions from?
All good.
Good over here, Mr. Delaney?
Yeah.
Uh, 10B liaison and administration reports.
Start. All right. Uh, June 6th, I attended the Shakopee Chamber event. That was at Greystone, uh, Great Networking. Um, June 9th, I presented, uh, the Cub Scout PAC 916 Shakopee pins, uh, 15 of them, um, for their, for thanking them for planting the flowers that are, are downtown. Uh, they were very appreciative of that. And let's see, Thursday, let's, oh, um, Taste of Shakopee, the 13th, um, had a, uh, had a table out there for people to, uh, come up, ask questions, engage. Um, had a few people come up. Um, everything was all positive. Um, June 2, and then one thing with Shakopee Public Schools, I just wanted to let everyone know on June 20th, uh, Thursday, they're going to do a safety training from 7:45 to 1:00 PM at Jackson Elementary and Shakopee High School. Um, this is in conjunction with the fire department, the police department, sheriff's office, St. Francis, uh, bus service. So it looks like they're going to do some, um, um, various training exercises. So every, so people are aware when they see vehicles that nothing is going on, no student.
What's the date of that?
Uh, the 20th, Thursday.
Okay.
Yep. That's it.
Counselors Contreras.
I have nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Counselor Whitey.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Delaney.
Well, six, nine, Paulish, we're just making all the surveys to come back in. Um, Spuck, we had a workshop on AMI and IT. And let's see, it's, I don't know if Benedictine had lunch over there. Uh, skill meeting, that was actually pretty good. It was a legislative update from, uh, Senator Pratt, Representative Tabke, Representative Big Bird, and Representative Kozic. And it was the Amory ribbon cutting.
Amory. My report, uh, June 11th, did the Amory ribbon cutting, 55 plus out in, uh, Canterbury Development. Very nice place. Counselor Delaney was there. We decided we were going to spend the money for a couple of months, bill the city and, and use all the amenities, the pool table and, you know, poker table, bar and the lounging areas and stuff. But we decided against that. Mr. Reynolds won't let us do that. So, uh, 13th Golf Garage, Mr. Reynolds, I, I attended, pretty cool place. It's up by, uh, the Cub Development there. Uh, what's next to it? Um, the pet place. Anyway, state, state of, yeah, state of the art simulators up there. They've got, I can't remember how many stalls they have, but they have, uh, a driving range, a bunch of stalls, up to four per stall. You can link two together. Uh, you can do online play, multitude of courses. Um, I was amazed because the, the technology even can register the spin on the ball when you hit it. So it was pretty cool. Um, 17th was AAA ribbon cutting, uh, located in Walmart. There, I can't remember how many they said they have. It's the first one in our area. So when we look back at the call load on 169 and the percentage of that 2,000 calls that are motor assist, um, this is where, that's, that's their date, their deal, you know? So hopefully that can help with some of that motor assist, providing people sign up for it. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, what's your report?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All righty. Item number 11, other business? Mr. Delaney?
One topic. I know we had mentioned a kind of a icebreaker went out. Um, historical society, is that Shakopee Bowl, I think in August.
Is there?
Yeah. Would that be something they're going to go do or as a council?
I don't know. Throw the date past Mr. Reynolds. He can throw it out to everybody else and see. And I don't know that we as a city can make a contribution, but individuals on their own behalf certainly can.
It's up to teams of six, I read. Six at the table. There you go.
I'll tell you right now, I, I can bowl a game with eight strikes in a row and the next one is like a 78. And there's zero, zero consistency with me.
Three, three-time mixed league champion, but can't get over 120.
I'll use the bumpers.
Any other business? Item number 12, close session pursuit to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D point 05 subdivision 3B to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege relating to potential litigation regarding a contractual dispute. So at this point, we will ask that the chamber be cleared.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if, uh, if I could, will, why don't we get a second for that motion if we could?
Well, let's get a motion and, and.
I'll make that motion.
With, with the specific Minnesota statute.
Oh, with Minnesota, uh, moving to close session pursuit to Minnesota Statute 13D Tag 05 subdivision 3B.
Your second?
Second.
I just want to make a quick statement on the record, which is.
Microphone, microphone, Jim.
There we go. Uh, because this is being closed by attorney-client privilege, I've made a determination that it's important for me to discuss with the council in a closed session, uh, matters relating to this potential litigation. And the need for me to do that outweighs the need to discuss it in public. So therefore I do recommend you close the meeting.
Okay. Any, uh, discussion on the motion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're in closed session. We will be moving to a different location, correct?
Correct. We will be headed to the conference room down at the end of the hallway, please.
I'm waiting, do I have to wait for that outside camera there or this one? We're good to go? All right.
Nope.
Nope.
Go. Yes.
Okay. Shakopee City Council is, uh, back out of closed session. Uh, attorney-client privilege under 13D point 05, uh, 3B with no action taken. And that brings us to item number 13 on today's agenda. Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, 7:00 PM.
Mr. Delaney, any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.